I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda, and it is a discussion regarding a resolution establishing a charter review commission for the purpose of conducting a targeted review of the Norman City Charter and to report its findings to the city council. This is the study session of the city council for Thursday, April 4, 2019. And Catherine is going to give us the background information.
Yes. This discussion began in late October when council asked staff to start taking suggestions for things that could be considered by charter review commission at that time. The primary focus was including the city position of an internal auditor and the existing city attorney position, including language in the charter that would make those positions reportable directly to council. And through that discussion, others had suggestions. And so at the end of that meeting, we took, we said we'd take suggestions through November. We actually took them, I think, a little bit longer than that, but we got suggestions in November and December, and then brought this back, I think, in January for a vote. It was postponed at that time, and then again, it was postponed in March, so that you all could, I think, vet some of the suggestions that we had received and determine who you wanted to serve on the committee. Initially, when it was discussed, we talked about using the appointments from the last charter review commission and just sort of reinstituting that commission as it stood then, as long as they were able to, willing and able to serve. And so I think, based on discussions since then, there's a desire to change some of that committee makeup or add to that committee. And then we've gone through and added in the resolution all of the things that have officially been added through council action, through amendments and through the original suggestions. And we have prepared additional amendments that council had requested but did not make before it was amended or postponed at the last, at the meeting in March. And so the things that we have so far are adding language to the charter, as I said, related to the appointment and removal of a city auditor that would be a full-time employee and subject to removal, appointed and subject to removal by the city council. Same for the city attorney. Adding language to the charter regarding violations of the city council ethics ordinance. Consider increasing the monthly stipend provided for mayor and council. Adding reimbursement for cellphone expenses for mayor and council. Considering the term of office for council members, whether that should be changed from two to three years, and the mayor should be changed from three to four years. Considering whether the term should expire on the last Tuesday of the month in which a runoff election is held or scheduled to be held. So that's addressing that lag time you have between getting elected and actually getting sworn in. Consider whether language should be added to require a sitting council member to resign their position when they file for another office. Consider language requiring a candidate to reside in the ward in which he or she is filing to represent for a minimum of six months prior to filing. Consider removing language requiring a vote of the electorate prior to increasing city utility rates and adding language in its place to establish an independent elected utilities board to set those rates. And I want to point out on this one particularly that we, at the last meeting, we had prepared language amending that, and that resolution got postponed before that language was amended. But I think the suggestion then was going to be, consider adding language that would require council to consider a resolution calling for a vote of the electorate to increase city utility rates under certain conditions, finding a financial need or upon recommendation of an independent elected utilities board. So that would still require a vote of the people. Consider adding-
Just to be very, very clear, citizens will still vote on all rate. They're going to look at it. I mean, I don't know if they're going to come up with, but this is one of my deal. I want to be very clear.
No, 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 no.
For voting, citizens were not taking away your right to vote. Don't even want to talk about it.
Yeah. Yeah, and so that was the language that was asked for to amend the resolution that didn't actually get acted on was to create a trigger for reviewing whether or not voters should be given something to vote on in terms of a rate increase. Councilmember Holman?
I was just going to say, I don't know if this necessarily is the language that gets there, but I do, that's what would be my intent too, is to prevent the city council from waiting, well, in the case of the last water rate increase, nine years before rate, between rate increases, nine years. And I know it's really difficult for the council to propose rate increases on stuff. Putting it off because they're afraid to do it is a problem. And there's got to be something, I think, in the charter that says, if we're going to vote on rate increases, the governing body has got, is going to have to propose it at these times or something, you know, based on this criteria.
I think it's a good idea to have a group that looks at the budgetary picture and says, this is our recommendation. It should be a public thing. Yes, Councilmember Casper?
Again, with this one and all of them, the language is vague for a reason.
Right. It's really to give the commission-
Consider this.
Right, a chance to review the issue.
I'm not saying do it, don't do it, even, you know, but consider it and come back with a recommendation, and your recommendation can be, recommendation can be no. It could be, let's do this, no, we're not having your cellphones. Yes, we think so. No, we think you should have 10 years. It was to, will you guys look at this topic?
Yeah. And all those recommendations will come back to council, and you all would have to vote on them and determine whether or not you want those to be sent to the voters to vote on.
Councilmember Wilson?
Is that a regular majority or supermajority?
It's regular majority. Or five votes as required by a charter for any action. And the other items, we're considering adding language to the charter to establish a resident or community bill of rights. This is an idea that's been used in other cities. Consider changing language in the charter related to the Norman Regional Hospital Authority Board membership. This is something that they've requested-
This was a request of the hospital because of the fact that they are regional, and they have no way, if they wanted to have somebody from Moore on there, or if they expand in Purcell, they have no way of adding board members to represent those constituents. And that's why they want to change it, which I think would be a good thing for them.
And then an amendment that was made, I think, in January was to add language to the charter related to getting a positive vote from the electric electorate for approval of a TIF district or tax and current finance district over $5 million prior to implementing that. And then a couple of other amendments that we had prepared in advance of the last meeting that just, it was postponed before we made any of those was-
Can I ask a question about that before we go on to part M?
Councilmember Scott?
Thank you. Sorry, I was doing this, but you didn't see me. About, about $5 million, is that in project costs, or is that like over how many years or per year that we are? Is it just vague for that reason?
Well, it was a request of Councilmember Wilson, but my assumption was that it was a project plan total of $5 million. Okay. The other three items, and they're on the summary sheet that I think Brenda gave all of you, is a review about the appointment process for council vacancies that would allow the outgoing council member creating the vacancy to appoint his or her successor unless they're being, they're vacating the office due to removal. And then changing the percentage required for a recall petition. Right now, only 10%, of the registered voters actually vote, so the 25% requirement for recall petition is pretty unattainable. And so this was requested, I think, from Councilmember Castleberry, to change that percentage to more accurately reflect a percentage of vote, people who are actually voting in those elections. And then the last one was to consider implementing plurality voting. So this would be, this would avoid runoffs. So whoever gets a plurality of votes would be deemed the winner.
Mayor Miller?
Councilmember Scott? So I had actually thrown that out there, and Brenda, will you clarify what you shared with me? It's about how we would have to have a different system and completely have our own-
Thank you, Brenda. We talked about this before, at the same time we talked about doing some different type of voting procedures, but because the system is a statewide system, even though we have our local election board here, it's all tied to one statewide system. So the machines and the way they count votes now could not do a plurality vote. So the only way we could do that is if we conducted our own elections and had our own machines. Can you explain- Yes, Councilmember Bearman?
Well, I think if we're going to be opening the door to that through, you know, is that just another word for ranked choice voting? Plurality voting?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, well, if we're going to be opening the door to running our own elections, I have always been a proponent of ranked choice voting, particularly like the last year when we talked about it, just because I would like the opportunity to avoid runoff elections. And ranked choice voting basically provides a runoff opportunity kind of within how votes are calculated. So I just wanted to make sure that plurality voting didn't just mean whoever received the most votes, because if that were the case, I would-
Well, it could, based on, I mean, the interpretation. So if that was what you wanted to look at, we'd probably need to be clear to the charter commission that we'll look at both. But let me remind you too, that conducting our own elections would be a really significant cost. We would have to have our own polling sites, our own machines, our own officials. I mean, it's probably something that's going to be pretty difficult to do.
And maybe it will be cost prohibitive. I just wanted to make sure that if plurality voting just meant if there are eight candidates and the candidate who received the most votes only received 35% of the vote, let's say, that if that was what plurality voting meant, then I wanted to be sure that we're also talking about ranked choice if we're going to be opening the door to running our own elections, because I would prefer ranked choice, even though I do understand that maybe this whole concept isn't feasible simply due to the cost of running our own elections. But if we're going to be opening the door for the charter review commission to look at it, I want to make sure that ranked choice voting is a topic, because my personal preference is that that's, if we're opening the door to that, that would be my preferred track through that door.
Councilmember Wilson?
I was just going to ask about the cost. It seems like it would be really expensive to provide machines, people, places, but then, of course, we also pay $30,000 per-
We do. We, but you would, we would still be incurring those costs for the most part, because we would be, in some places, not all, but some places may charge to be a polling site. You have to pay your officials that have worked the polling sites. You have to pay for, you know, you still have to pay for ballots that we're paying for now. You still have to, and the machines themselves. And I have no idea what kind of capital cost that would be. I do know the cost we have today with the Cleveland County Election Board conducting the elections is between, between $36,000 and upwards, depending on how many ballots you have, on the, how large the ballots are, things of that nature, so.
Well, we'd almost for sure have to have another employee to handle that, or more. That's where you really start, I mean, then you have a regular expense all the time, not just cap. Yes, Councilmember Castleberry?
I assume we would still be subject to the state rules on when we can hold elections. Even though we're counting differently, we still have the months and the dates. That's one of our problems, when we, the blackout dates, that would still be overriding, wouldn't it?
Well, when we looked at that before, I'm trying, I think that it was if they were conducting the elections, we were limited. But I still think we would be somewhat limited, because we would still have to comply with the voter, the voter, there's two different acts that related to military voters, and so you have to have those ballots out to them sooner they have the ability to vote. So we're still going to be limited on some of that. Now, whether or not we can add additional days, possibly, but we need to double check that again.
So just as a follow-up, so would that also potentially give us the opportunity to have elections when we want to? I know sometimes we've been limited, but that's, that would be one of my questions. I know we're limited.
Right.
Why'd you guys have it then? Well, we only got three months, because it's not number of year, you know? We were histrionizing.
The first thing that'll happen is we'll have a preempt-
We'll get preempted again.
You have the real consequences. If you're interested, there was a really good story-
I'm not aware of-
...about ranked voting.
Some of the smaller communities that aren't that large, either voting at city hall-
So they can just have, yeah, one place.
So that's just one place that they come to vote, and, or the city clerk in those communities actually takes the filings. So there's a lot of different ways they've done it, but I don't know any larger Oklahoma community or city that runs their own elections.
Councilmember Casper?
Well, in general, whether it's this one or any of them, I don't have any problem with sending any of these things to the charter review committee to look at. I mean, I don't want to not send something to them, even stuff that, there's a few things I totally am against, but I think this is just the process of what we're going to send to them and-
And this is all information we would provide to the commission, so they could consider all of that cost, how logistically it would work when they consider what to recommend to you all.
Councilmember Scott?
So say we send this to the charter review committee? Like, we send all this stuff, based on what they decide then, at that point, after they make those decisions, we get to make the final decision about what goes to the ballot?
Right. And if you wanted, and they didn't recommend you send something, you could actually send something. It probably would not be a really smart thing to do if you'd sent it to the charter review committee and they recommended not, but yes, in the end, the council has the, has the authority. And it still has to go to the people, so.
We don't have the final say. Probably have the final say.
Councilmember Castleberry?
The last charter had several recommendations that council did not do. Some were forced, they wanted us to do this, we said no. Some things they were against, we did yes. But they just bring a recommendation forward, and then tell the councils, yes, we'll put it on the ballot, no, we won't put it on the ballot, and then it's still on the ballot. So it is, there's public meetings, so it's a big process, because the charter's a big chart, full constitution.
This resolution is written, just like the last one, in that once the recommendations come back to council, you do, you hold a special meeting for that purpose only, and each one of the items are voted on individually, whether or not to move forward on to a ballot.
I was just trying to think if there was anything else we wanted to ask before we go ahead and do. I couldn't think of anything else.
We're going to talk about this next. So when we, anyone have any other amendments or that they thought of? We want to make sure we add them now. It's really better than adding them-
Probably doesn't need to go in the charter, but I want to throw it out there for designated parking spaces.
Designated for what?
For council members. You ever tried to get here late on a busy council night? Parking all the way over at the police station, looking it over. Like I said, it doesn't, probably just needs to go to the charter, but irks.
Okay, Councilmember Kikman?
I want the stoplight clicker then.
We've basically been through, what we've done is just Catherine went through all of the things that we said we wanted to send to the charter review committee, and then we just went through this amendment sheet, this executive sheet right here, and talked about those. And the comments have only been that people are comfortable sending forward everything to the charter review committee, and we discussed the fact that whatever the charter review committee recommends to us, then we still have to make a decision about what we want to send forward. And it could be all of them, it could be none of them. And ranked choice voting to plurality there. So right now, what we were doing is asking people if they had any other things they had thought of. I don't think we-
Was the one that I gave you the night of the meeting? Is it added here?
Which one is that?
See, now you're going to ask him to remember anything.
It's probably written in my agenda book from the night.
About partisan elections?
Oh, that's right.
This is in the charter?
Yeah. I will add that.
What was it?
I don't remember the exact word. The word partisan is in the charter three times, and so the question was kind of like for the charter review commission to review whether our elections should or should not be partisan, and the changes need to be made to ensure that they are or are not partisan based on their recommendation.
Kind of clarified?
Well, the two, the two sections in the charter that this appears in, it's both, it's in Article II, and it just says, party designation, partisan designation forbidden, and then it talks about how the ballot should be nonpartisan. So I think what you were asking is for them to consider whether or not we should continue being nonpartisan, or should we make our elections partisan?
If they're going to continue to be nonpartisan, the changes need to be made to ensure that.
Is that, is that everything?
I did have a question about the members.
Okay, that's what we're getting ready to discuss.
Oh, okay, I'm so sorry.
We haven't talked about that at all.
Settle down, Kikman, settle down.
I was up in the city, got stuck in traffic, and I thought this thing was at 5:30.
So just, just as a preface to this part of the discussion, the, I had Brenda put on the top, here are what the current members are on the left. Those are the people that have already been called, because the understanding was that we were going to recall the people that had been on the committee before. So all those people have agreed to serve. It shows the wards, so we can see what kind of representations that we were getting. And then several people said they wanted to add people. And so it would be nice if we could work that out before we go to a vote, but, so, and, and the reason Ward 5 was given 2 was because Ward 5 didn't have anybody. And we want to think about, how big do we really want this committee to be?
That was going to be my question, is what's our, what's our top number? First and foremost, I think, is the big question.
Councilmember Castleberry?
I'd ask Brenda for her input on logistics and size of commission. We've done it with some other stuff too.
It was not directed at any particular person, just-
We've had, once you get up and over, I mean, nine is a good number, honestly, it really is. And if you add some, that's fine, but once you get up and over 13, it almost becomes unmanageable. And not only that, but you lose participation, because it takes, it takes a few months to go through all of these, and then you, some of them just stop coming. So, I mean, some of the ones that served last time, two of them had moved out of town, and two of them chose not to be reappointed. So we had 13 last time, but we never had 13 in attendance at any meeting.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember Clark?
Well, I only have one. I'm good with that. I feel like the obvious choice is to remove people who have multiple, and I love my neighbors to the north, but four in Ward 8 seems a little top-heavy compared to the one in Ward 6. Just figuring that might be a logical place to start. Nothing below, birthday girl, but, you know.
Do you, is Jim going to be potentially applying for your seat, though?
That was my question as well. I have heard that now that we're done with the April 2 election, I would like to move forward with filling my seat. We already have the committee members identified, and I'd like to reach out to them and begin that, because later that night, I got a message from a Ward 6 resident asking when the applications were going to be out. So people are looking for it in Ward 6, and I have heard that Mr. Griffith is interested in applying for the remainder of my term, and will that be a conflict with-
He'd have to, he'd have to come off the charter review committee, so you might, we might just ask him, you know, if you're seriously thinking about that, you might want to take your name off the charter review committee.
And we need to know pretty darn quick.
I would think you'd take him off if he got elected.
Before tomorrow? Before tomorrow?
Well, if the names are published as part of the agenda, we're going to do it the next meeting, not the ninth.
He can always put it on there, then if he gets selected, then he could-
Okay, good.
Then you could resign.
But then we'd have, I mean, do I, I'm just wondering, will I have enough time to get someone else in there? I want to make sure my ward is represented. Because that's my concern, is the timing of it. Like, do I need to put a backup on there? Do I need to go call Jim right now, or?
Well, I would imagine that we're going to probably get this group going sometime in May, would be their first meeting. If he is, applies and is appointed, you know, he would probably be attending the first two or three or whatever before he needed to step down.
Okay.
If, if we knew that he was the one that's going to be appointed, we could always come up with-
So we can do it later?
Yeah, I mean, you could put it like on the next agenda to add somebody in this place.
Okay, so this isn't like a one opportunity to get the, okay.
Okay. Councilmember Holman?
I think I would prefer to go with nine members, as Brenda would suggest, and have each ward have, well, prefer Ward 5 had two, have two members and the rest of us have one.
I'm thrilled that my work has been taken care of. I don't know if we're about anything, only got one on here.
Okay, that means then that if you're going to change out the person that you have in your ward, we have to say that the council member decided to change the person out on the ward.
I'm good with Doug. He served 10 years on council. I'm good with him. If he's still willing to.
I'd hate it if Doug came off.
The ones on the left side that Doug previously have all been contacted already before we did this the first time and have agreed to serve, and several of them have contacted me since then several times about-
When we started.
Yeah, when we started, when we're starting. So, and it's whatever council decides, I, you know, we certainly understand that, but we would have to contact one of the Ward 4 and one of the Ward 8 people.
I'm okay with the bigger committee, because getting everybody in the room, and, I mean, does it have to have everybody? Does there a requirement for them to all show up to every meeting to be able to make these decisions?
Certainly the, the desire is not necessarily always-
Well, it's also in the requirements. They can't, they miss more than two meetings without an excuse, then they-
It's two meetings in a row.
I feel like I got an air and a spare.
One meeting in a row.
I got an air and a spare, so it's like, I don't like having two, because if somebody just has a commitment, they can't, you don't have to go replace them.
Councilmember Scott?
And we start from scratch, and then everybody picks a person from around the room?
But we, then we have to call all of the people and tell them that-
I mean, I'm sure some of these people will still stay, but if we're going down to a committee of nine, or if we choose that we want to do 13 again, I'm okay with doing up to 13, but if other people think we should do nine, then I think we need to figure that out, and then if we're doing nine, we should start from scratch.
I'm up okay with 13, because some of these people are going to drop out. So here's my question, I guess, I didn't want to just say.
I'm just going to go.
So here's my question with being 13, is then which wards get two and which wards get one?
Yeah.
So that it just opens the door to some-
Or you can have it at large.
At large.
Right, well, that's what, and I think that that would be, if we're doing nine, that that would be appropriate, is that each council member gets to pick one, and then the mayor gets to pick one. Although I would like to then drop the requirement of not missing three in a row, but missing either three total or two in a row, because I, I mean, you got to be there. This is a really, really important commission, and so three in a row, especially if they're only meeting once a month?
Yeah.
That's, I mean, so you get three months of not showing up before you get booted.
This is not a seasonal commission, so.
Exactly.
I support you.
Councilmember Holman?
Okay, so I'm not against a bigger committee, I just, with nine, I'm just wanting to ward, that's not, but, so for me in Ward 7, I'd want to stick with Doug Coverley, and I'd be okay with Ward 4 having two, because, one, Carol Dillingham, I'm not sure where Kevin Pipes lives exactly, but Carol and Greg Youngman both live within blocks of Ward 7. I mean, the northern part of Ward 7 and Ward 4 run, are just the same thing.
Kevin lives on La Jolla, South La Jolla.
Okay, so they all three live one block over from Ward 7, so I'd be okay if Ward 4 had two, because I feel like one of them would represent interest of Ward 7.
There is one thing I did want to raise, and I want to disclose this, and I want to raise it as something for, I guess, us to consider, it kind of concerns me, because of the, especially because of the addition of the TIF, Item M, about the TIF increment voting deal, you know, Carol is the attorney for the county. Carol has attended meetings with us as the county's attorney on the TIF. She is also, you know, a former council member, and I love Carol, but I am a little concerned about, does that- about, is that, is that a conflict? You know, or appearance of a conflict, is that, you know, and I don't wanna put her or us or the county, you know, in an odd position, since we are, especially since we are adding that TIF deal into the list of discussions. I don't know what y'all...
I don't know. Councilmember Wilson.
I actually think it's a benefit to have her on there, because she brings an insight towards what the county is thinking and feeling, and also the legal background. So, I think it's actually a benefit. I don't know if it's a conflict, though.
And I would point out, if she's taken off, there's no women, except for the proposed of Victoria and Aisha. But they're proposed, they're not...
I didn't thought about that, but, I just wanted to put that out there, I didn't know Catherine wanted to do it. Did I give you any?
Well, our conflicts policy for boards and commissions is, I think, pretty similar to what you all have, in terms of appearance of a conflict, you know, do they get, have pecuniary interest?
I mean, is she petition gonna have to recuse on the discussion about the TIF as the lawyer for the county?
She should probably disclose it, but I don't think the issue of whether or not to bring it to the voters is necessarily a conflict, it's just that issue. But I would probably tell her to disclose it, to be safe.
Yes, councilmember Castleberry.
I don't think any of these people would have a conflict on anything, because they're not making a final decision.
Right, but we do have an ethics policy that applies to our boards and commissions that are recommendatory.
I think it's for disclosing, but they're, again, they're gonna make, it's council makes final decision, the voter's gonna make their true final decision. So, they don't really control their benefit, you know. Just have a bit of caution.
Yes, I mean, I would have her disclose it, I have a bit of caution, but...
I think her... Mrs. Brea, I actually didn't agree with her when she was the attorney there for the county, talking about the TIF. Expertise, I think, is vital to this stuff.
So, how many people? Are we doing nine or 13? Nine or 13?
Oh, no, I got two.
So, who gets two?
Okay, with Ward 5, Ward 4 had two.
But not Ward 8?
I support nine.
Ward 8 had eight or two last time. I have, you know, Jim Eller on the east side, and then Victoria McBride on the west side, because I do have some geographic differences.
Well, Trey, where's Trey and Harold live? I mean, you got four.
Trey lives also on the east side, I think, and I'm not sure.
You can replace one of those existing peoples, what I hear the mayor saying.
Or I can scrap both of them and replace both, right? Or if we only have, if we decide that Ward 8 only gets one...
Certainly, you can recommend that.
Or if Ward 8 only gets one, then probably want one of these other recommendations. That's why I wanna figure out how many people we're gonna do, and then also how many wards get more, we get one or more than one.
If you have two members for every board, you end up with 16 people, and we don't wanna have an even number.
I just need to know how many I get.
I think a committee of 17 is ridiculous.
I know, the mayor gets something, too, I mean, you have a lot of...
You get your at-large.
But the mayor lives somewhere. Is a member of, is a resident of the wards, that's, an at-large member is still a ward person.
Well, you live in Ward 5, don't you?
Right.
And you don't, I mean, there was not somebody from Ward 5. Your at-large person was gonna be somebody else, I thought.
I, if I had a selection, I'd probably do at-large. Okay.
So, I'm gonna request that, I'm going to assume that no ward's gonna have more than two people, which I think is fair. I think any ward should have more than two people, otherwise the committee is too big. And because of the proximity of Ward 4 and Ward 7, I think it's reasonable that Ward 4 have two representatives, and I'm gonna propose to replace Kevin Pipes with Greg, since Greg's the most recent council member. And hearing everybody's comments about Carol, that she stay on the, on the list. I've spoken to Greg, and he's willing to serve.
So then if we add Sarita, your two, and both of mine are willing to serve, I actually texted Juan to make sure that she, Aisha, make sure she was still cool.
Okay, Ward 1.
So, one of the things that I've been struggling with is wanting to make sure that this committee has diverse representation, and also, frankly, I'm starting to think that maybe having someone who has not served on multiple committees would also be a benefit. So, what I was thinking about today was replacing Bill Wilson and offering Sean Williamson Jennings a second seat. She, I think, would bring a different invaluable perspective to a lot of these issues, especially when it comes to things like compensation. Because as someone who is not really city affiliated at all, there's no kind of prior connection to, to these issues. So, that would be my suggestion, is that, it's not that I don't, it's not that I don't like Bill Wilson, but he already is serving on, he's also serving on a committee that oversees TIFs. So, you know, not only does, is he already currently serving on a, on a committee, but he's serving on a committee that has a direct relationship with one of these, with one of these items. So, that would be my suggestion, is if Ward 2 had two members, I would want to keep Bob Thompson and replace proposed member Bill Wilson with proposed member Sean Williamson Jennings.
Okay, we don't know what Ward 2 would do. Joe's not shown any...
Yeah, Ward 1.
I'll make sure you get one.
No, I was moving on. She, I thought that was...
I thought I said Ward 1. I got all confused. Oh, sorry.
I thought I heard it, too.
She said Sean Williamson would, would be on, I guess, with Bob Thompson.
With her, and replace...
Well, she's, I'm gonna go ahead and put two for each one of these, and we're gonna, we're just gonna move on, and I'll think, I mean, otherwise, we're just gonna sit here and argue about who gets two, or who gets...
We're not 16.
Now, I have not confirmed this with Sean, so there is a possibility that she would not be interested in, in serving, and if that's the case, I would be, or able. If that's the case, I would be fine with just Bob Thompson.
She has approached me saying she'd like to be appointed to a committee.
Okay, I mean, and we talked about it on election, on election night, I just wasn't sure if this was what she had in mind, so...
If we're all gonna have two, if that's what you wanna do, then that's the second person.
No, I don't wanna have two. I just wanna get this done, and we're gonna have people that are gonna argue that they get to have two, and so, if, if they get to have two, then everybody gets to have two. We have the same number of people in all the wards.
You're good with one?
I'm fine with one.
I'm fine with one, I want, I want the most qualified people, I really don't care what, what they are.
Who are you going with?
Kim McBride.
Same, okay.
He's been on it before, he's been on school board, understands the legislative process, got a good background in governmental operations, sharp guy.
So, all of these so far, for 2, 3, 4, plus Greg?
Minus Kevin.
6, minus Kevin, plus, in with Doug, so all of those are staying, except for Kevin.
So, right now, we're at 11 if you add on the two from, you know, the two from, 12 if you add on the two from Ward 5 and Sean.
So, doesn't that take care of everything except for 8?
Yep. And, yeah, my proposals are Jim Eller and Victoria McBride. Like you were saying earlier, we need diversity on the committee. If Sean accepts and will have at least two women, I think Victoria would bring another perspective from her own experiences, especially running for...
So, you wanna strike your two and add Victoria and Jim?
Right, yeah. And Jim's also on the central conservancy board and knows many processes. Actually, that still keeps us at 11?
So, that is 1, 2, 3, 4...
12 if you add Sean.
5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12.
We'll work with whatever, yeah. Still not Brad Peters. No.
Okay.
I was just saying, if you're gonna, you're gonna have to have another Ward 7 person.
Okay, I just make it sure.
There's only three living Ward 7 representatives.
I guess I have 10 for some reason.
The two Ward 5.
And currently.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, there is Linda Lockett.
Do any of these proposed members, I'm sorry, I just had your hand up.
Councilmember Castleberry.
It's, I understand that ward members get to pick their choices, but I would ask you to consider you're removing the most experienced person in the city, on the city charter, who's been city attorney, or school board attorney, one of the most experienced lawyers. Off the committee. I mean, you're looking for the best people, most qualified persons, there's nobody more qualified than you are.
I think we've got some great people.
I know, right?
You get an at-large person, too.
Just said she's at the hospital, she's dehydrated, disoriented.
Doesn't make it three for me, I think that makes it two for me and one at-large.
She had a documented...
I agree. I'd agree with you, too, though. I mean, I agree that it's your ward if those two...
These other people have also been on this committee, some of these existing members are still coming back to the committee.
I, I just hate to tell any of these people that they're not gonna be on, but if that's what you guys want, then that's what we'll do. Yeah.
Build the at-large.
And I'll think about the at-large person.
I think so. Thought that we kinda recap here.
I think this is 12.
Yeah, we're at, I think we're at 13. We're at 13.
We're at 12.
We're at 12, and then 13 if I do an at-large. So, I could, I could probably call Harold, but then that's gonna... Trey out. Yes, please do.
Okay, this is what we, this is what we have, guys. We have Bob Thompson, Richard Stawicki, Kenneth McBride, Carol Dillingham, Jim Griffith, Doug Coverley, Greg Youngman, Victoria McBride, Jim Eller, Tom Hackelman, Aisha Prather, and Sean Williamson Jennings, and then possibly an at-large.
Do any of those people serve on any other current boards or commissions of the city?
I do, yeah.
Well, we took Kevin off, so, yes.
Well, Doug is on the hospital board. Well, I just, I don't see the penchant for not wanting to have experience. People that have done this, people that have been on the council, I just don't understand not wanting to have that experience.
We're trying to get through this lack of city trust.
I'm just asking the question, I'd just like to know who they are, just Doug Coverley, apparently he's on the hospital board, who else? Anybody else?
Jim Griffith is on one of the ad hoc committees for Nora Ford. If we're taking Kevin out, then that wouldn't apply. I think that's it.
Are you saying something, Sarita?
I, I mean, personally, both of the people that I've put forth have a lot of experience in how the city works and functions, and they have both proven that they want to be involved, and they've asked for opportunities to be involved, and this was really the first time I've had an opportunity to put somebody forth. So, I think that all of these people, no matter who sticks, will, will be great and wonderful, and the ones that, the new people are smart and can catch on, and know what's going on, too, so I don't feel like we have a problem. I think it's great to have fresh breath into these committees, it needs to happen.
I do think it's, I do think it's something that we should be cognizant of. We have 110,000 people in this town, a lot of smart, intelligent people, and we do have people, you know, currently and or as a part of this process, gonna be serving on multiple boards. And I think it's incumbent upon us, and it's part of what, you know, Brea and I both talked about during the campaign, to engage more people and get more people involved in committees, and, you know, and this is an opportunity for them to, you know, we don't always have this committee, and it's not a standing committee that's gonna be around necessarily forever. So, I didn't know Kevin was on another committee, guess that's all the more reason why I'm comfortable replacing him with Greg, honestly, because I have made the comment that I, for my people that, that I think if I have the chance to recommend, I'm not gonna recommend, highly likely would not recommend somebody who's already actively serving on a committee, because I feel like in Ward 4, there are enough talented people that I can put on a committee to serve, that we don't have multiple people serving, and I would hope that other council members from the wards would feel the same way. And I just think, I mean, I, I just think that's something that we need to be better about, because it's a chance to engage more people. Nothing against about experience, any of those things, just like Greg's a perfect example, former council member, not on a committee, boom, he's willing to serve, let's take advantage of his experience.
Yes, councilmember Clark.
I wholeheartedly agree, but I will point out, this is a very unique commission. It's not like, you know, library board, so I just think that needs to be considered when, and I think there's something to be said about historical knowledge on this one, but like you pointed out with Greg Youngman's example, he has experience, but is also not on a board. So, I don't think we should start getting in the habit of making exceptions to clearly what need to be priorities, but the Charter Review seems kind of unique, that's all I'm gonna say.
I appreciate adding, I mean, what I said at the beginning was, if we are, we are adding people that add diversity, I think that's a good thing. I think there, I think there's a really good argument for that. I think it's great that we're adding some women, there are not enough women on there. We're adding some women of color, I think that is a very good thing. Yes, councilmember Holman.
I would just say I do agree with much of what's been said. For me, for my ward, I do think Doug is best, most qualified person in my ward, anyway, being an attorney, and I think he's the longest-serving council member ever, 10, 10 years, so. If we were doing a second Ward 7 person, I would probably pick somebody that's definitely not serving currently on anything, isn't, doesn't have a history of being on council or anything, but for now, definitely, that's why I would stick with Doug, for me.
And personally, I don't even care what ward they come from, I just care about what, who the people are.
Just wanna make sure the whole city's geographically represented.
Just in terms of historical knowledge and history and service, I, I think that I would probably keep Harold on there as an at-large.
No, that makes 13.
No, that makes it 13.
Lucky 13.
You put it that way.
Harold was elected as the past chair of the Charter by the people on the Charter Review, so obviously, they think...
I think we have experience, we have different experience, we'd be a great group.
Okay, anything else? So, we think we have this down, so that when we bring it up at the meeting, we're not gonna add things?
I'm gonna exclude all the things that were proposed as amendments, since it was postponed at this meeting, now we can start fresh with a new resolution now.
Can you add the party?
There's actually, there's actually a motion on the floor to adopt the one in this form.
I thought we just postponed.
We, we adopt, had a motion to adopt and had the amendment on the TIF before, yeah, before we postponed it in February, so, all of this will have to be amendments, but we can track those up ahead of time.
What is one amendment?
Thought it sounded too easy.
That's an replacement. We have an amendment to replace it.
You're all in agreement.
Amend here, here, here. I mean, this is just stuff we're sending to them to review, so it's not like...
That's why, that's why it's really important that we're in agreement right now, that this is what we're going to do, and we're not gonna change it.
Good for me.
All right, so we have agreed on what the amendments will be, we have agreed on the slate of committee members that will be on the committee.
When are we gonna see this?
It's like, these days, I'm not so sure.
Is this gonna be on next Tuesday?
Probably not.
Probably not, that week. All right, meeting adjourned.
Way to go, everybody.
I've got sweet tacos and weird, crazy circles brewery. I texted her, if I don't, if I don't hear from her in the next day or so, then I'll have you guys reach out.
But I figured that I was gonna be able to do it.
I wanted to text her.
I was thinking, I was tagging her, so I could say...